Good afternoon and welcome to our work session. We're going to start off by conducting roll call. Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrik.
Present.
Commissioner Sana Gregory. Commissioner Demont Davis. Okay, Madam Clerk, just for the record, so Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Gregory currently not with us. All right, are there any preliminary items that any of the present board members would like to discuss in reference to next week's meeting? All right, here in our first work session discussion item will be Parks and Recreation Update. Mr. Troy Hodges.
All right. Good afternoon Chairman and Commissioners. We'll begin with trying to, I want to give you, probably take thirty, forty-five minutes, is that okay Chairman?[88.59][88.59](laughter) It'll probably take five or ten minutes and basically I'll just tell you guys, you know, our story. So, next slide. I'll send you the current presentation. I know it may be hard for you to see at home, but I'll send you that organizational chart. Basically, that just depicts our seven divisions and those full-time employees under Parks Recreation. Next slide. The Parks Recreation Department is celebrating fifty years. We were established in November of 1971. Celebrating fifty years, over those fifty years, we have acquired sixteen parks, twenty-nine tennis courts, we have just installed ten pickleball courts with five recreation centers, fourteen trails, trail miles. Those trails consist of Rivers Edge Greenway, the Jesters Creek Trail that goes from Mount Zion Road to the Headquarters Library, and over at International Park, the Four Phases that goes from the golf course over to Waverly Way. We have seven divisions, and I'll briefly describe each of those divisions shortly. Forty-eight athletic fields, seventeen playgrounds, two bark parks, four swimming pools, one natatorium, which is the Steve Lundquist Aquatic Center, a Rennel's Nature Preserve, the Spivey Splash Water Park, which is in progress, and we'll go over that as well, the Sky Trail Ropes Course, which is in progress, and I will explain the national accreditation that our department holds. Next slide. The accreditation, of course, is the national accreditation, and it is the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. Being accredited is a way for the Clayton County citizens, basically, to, that the Clayton County citizens can hold our department accountable with doing the best practices in the Parks Recreation industry, and there are one hundred and fifty-four standards that we meet, have to meet, and you have to meet in order to become accredited. We've initially received our accreditation when Dietrich Stanford was director back in the seventies.[269.83][269.83](laughter) I think it was like ten years ago, and this is our second re-accreditation that we're going through now. So, we'll go through that accreditation, re-accreditation process in June. We are, there's only ten agencies in the state of Georgia that are nationally accredited. We were the first county agency to become accredited in the state of Georgia. There are now four counties in the state of Georgia that are accredited, and we are one of one hundred and eighty-three agencies nationwide that are accredited. The Athletic Division is our first division that I'll go over. Post-pandemic, we've, post-COVID-19, we have had to kind of revamp our, what we offer the kids, and detailing, you know, with the COVID and those restrictions that are in place, we developed the Rotating Recession Program that, basically, it rotated from park to park with limited numbers. We revamped our youth basketball program to a three-on-three type program as opposed to, you know, nine to ten players per team. Along the Walk and Read Program, you may have seen that in our parks, it's, we developed that in conjunction with the Clayton County Library System to where the kids or adults can go, go walk through a park and scan a QR code and read a book along, you know, the further they walk in the, on the trail, the more pages they get to read. That's a very popular program that we just started up. We developed a youth cycling program along with the Skills Academy, and right now, currently, we are in our spring programming, which is the track soccer, baseball, and softball and tennis. We are currently registering for our fall programming, which consists of football, soccer, and cheerleading. We continue to do our facility rentals with the outside organizations renting the parks for their tournaments, and that's our athletics program. Our green space program, it consists of the Rennel's Nature Preserve in Morrow, it has a hundred and forty-six acres of natural woodland and wetland habitat. The, it has a, in conjunction with the Clayton State University, the biology and ecology student outdoor labs. We have a trail and preserve management program that we adhere to, outdoor classrooms, Georgia, the Georgia Audubon Society, Bird Watching Pike is a station out there, developed with the Georgia Audubon Society. We have audio tours that you can, again, scan these QR codes, and it tells you about, say for instance, the historical barn that is out there, it'll tell you a little bit of history about that. The Pollinator Garden, which is, Pollinator Garden, it is on Rosalynn Carter's Butterfly Garden Registry, and that's a very popular program that Stephanie puts on out there. The Annual Year Log is a yearly program we do, along with the Spring Fest, which is also known as the Azalea Festival. Rivers Edge Greenway, it's our largest natural green space, it consists of one hundred and ninety-seven acres. It is the previous Rivers Edge Golf Course down in the Rivers Edge subdivision. Currently, we have about a three-quarters of a mile trail that is partially on the golf course, and we're looking to expand that trail system very soon. We're going to be doing a survey along with Chief Murkison and Communications, we'll survey the area to see how they want it to look. The International Park Trail System is already established, you know, it's, we have approximately six and a half miles of trail out there. The Jesters Creek Greenway, of course, goes from the Mount Zion South Lake Mall area back to the Headquarters Library. That's the green space. And next slide. All right, International Park, currently, you know, there are, there's a lot of construction that is going on out there. You know, we have three pavilions that we are currently renting due to construction, and we continue to have our Fishing Derby Series, our Bark Park out there is very, very popular, our walking and hiking trails, we have picnic areas, the water, water park renovations, Spivey Splash, which we'll get to here shortly, the Sky Trail, the VIP Amphitheater is being renovated, and that is in the process of the design now. The Tennis Center, of course, we hold the Alta and the USA Team tournaments, we are also going to be the host of the National, 2021 National Wheelchair Tennis Tournament that will be done in conjunction with Henry County. So, that's going to be a huge tournament for the wheelchair tennis program. So, this is a minute, a minute-long video, and it just, basically, I just wanted to give you a preview of what is to come outside of International Park. There's no sound, so. Okay, so, see, right there in the middle, that's going to be the kiddie pool. The water park consists of a kind of a toddler infant area, which is there to your right. The middle area is for a little bit taller, more grown-up kids, and the, there's an area back there in the back that'll host water basketball. It'll have three basketball goals in the middle of it. Of course, you can see the slide where it dumps the kids out into the pool, they can go right over into the basketball. A very popular flow rider that you see on cruise ships, that's going to be an attraction as well, and of course, Georgia's longest lazy river. It's over fifteen-hundred feet long, and there in the background, as you see, is the red and blue structure that is the ropes course that you will be able to strap yourself into a sling and, you know, jump off of a two-story structure and, you know, have fun with that. And in the background, you can see we've got new parking lots that are going in, the VIP complex is under, almost, I would say, eighty percent done with the inside renovations, and the, of course, the stadium is, stadium renovation is just now getting underway with the, with the design. Okay, our Marketing and Communications Department, basically, what they do is they have developed video production, the videos are becoming more and more popular in the demand. They have a, we have a Meet the People campaign, and they handle all of the Clayton County Parks Recreation website, as well as the social media with Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat, all of the, all of the major social medias, you know, they update those, and all of our department publications. Our Parks Park Services Department, of course, you know, we, you know, they take care of the thirty-seven different parks. They also are responsible for the disinfection of all of our playground equipment, they spray that once a week, all of our facilities, along with the, under the training of Chief Murkison, we put them in, responsible for spraying down and disinfecting all of our facilities as well. The Ball Field Restoration, from multi-application to amenities and grounds enhancements to equipment management. The Payroll and Procurement, Payroll and Procurement Department, they handle our cap re-accreditation process that we're going through, handle all of the procurement payroll functions, employee files, management, new hire, we are one of the few departments in the county that handle all of our new hire processing and orientation processes. We do the Workman's Comp, the FMLA, employee training, department policies and procedure manuals, and any open records requests are handled in our Payroll and Procurement Division. Our Recreation Services, of course, consists of all of the five recreation centers, and that ranges from, you know, the virtual gaming is also a big, e-gaming is becoming a new, a new topic. So, you know, when I put forth that we need several new PlayStations and Xboxes and controllers and that, that's not for the office, that's for e-games, e-games is becoming very, very popular. We handle our movie Under the Starz series, our summer camp, you know, our summer camp is full this year, we have reduced our numbers from one hundred per site to fifty per site due to the COVID, and we are able to, as long as we have the staff to work the summer camps, we will be able to increase those as the guidelines lapse, if they do. That's all, Recreation Services also handles our community garden management and the recycling program. The extravagant, you know, all of our special events are handled under our Recreation Services Division. So, those were our seven, our seven different divisions under the Parks Recreation. I have also highlighted here some of the 2020 Splotz projects that will be upcoming within the next, or as the funds become available and allocated. From Rex Park to Marley City, Rum Creek, Steve Lundquist Aquatic Center roofing, the Virginia Stevens House is needing to be restored, all the way down to park improvements and VIP Amphitheater renovations. And that's, that is our story that will be continued as time goes on, and I'll be glad to take any questions that you guys may have at this time.
All right. We appreciate the presentation. Only question I have is referenced to hiring for the summer, have we already started?
Yes, sir.
And are, are we finding that young people are applying, or is it still sparse?
It's been slow compared to years past. We will be okay for our summer camp, you know, but I would say it's been slow, kids are still, the, the summer staff are still going through the process, you know, as we, today, you know, we processed four of them today, it's just been a slow process.
What's the start date for the summer camps?
June, June 2nd, next week.
Okay. Any other board member have any questions? Here and thank you very much, Mr. Hodges, for your presentation. Let's go straight to Fire Department Promotional Procedures, Chief Murkison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm pleased to come to you this evening, I guess, with two presentations, the first being Proposed Modifications to Appendix B of the Clayton County Civil Service Rules, which is entitled Fire Department Promotional Procedures. That is sensitive. A little bit about the timeline of this project, this project actually started back early to mid-2019, I sat down and had a meeting with Chairman and COO just to give them an update on where we were with our promotional procedures and how we wanted to proceed with restoring competitive testing, which had been the standard prior to them being changed some years ago. And the purpose of this was to bring us and CCPD back in line and restore parity in kind of how our promotional processes were handled and how we completed those processes, and that was followed by several meetings between my organization, CCPD, Legal, and Human Resources, in which we sat down and worked through the process. As we had kind of narrowed the, or got to the end of that, we had selected a test provider and began the process of validating those tests within our organization to ensure that they met our needs and met the actual job requirements that we have. And then, of course, as luck would have, a COVID hit and pretty much shut down everything that we had kind of started working on. So, now we are ready to, to bring those, those long-awaited changes to the board to make sure that we are in line with CCPD. And one of the tests that we will talk about is the Next Generation Firefighter Test, which we are currently using as it, it's not covered under Appendix B in these procedures. A little bit about the company that we use, it's Industrial and Organizational Solutions, and they're a company that provides nationwide services for fire law enforcement corrections and dispatch agencies. They not only do promotional testing, they do early entry testing, they do ongoing job proficiency testing. And one of the things that drove us to them is when we went to select a provider, we wanted to make sure that as we look at the fact that we are now an accredited agency internationally, we have standards that we have to meet. And one of the burgeoning topics in the fire service and is kind of a focal point of a document that we use to draft these procedures, is a document put out by our accrediting body called Twenty First Century Fire and Emergency Services, and within that document, a lot of the things that we do now are driven toward inclusiveness, diversity, and making sure in all of our programs and policies. And that's one of the things that drove us to Industrial Organizational Solutions is they were one of the only companies we looked at that actually have, their three tenants is dimension, diversity, and defensibility. So, when we look at the test and we start looking at kind of how we will go about this process, I know Chairman, you'll remember, there's rarely a promotional process that doesn't get challenged in some way, shape, form, or fashion, as Chief of Police, I know you dealt with it, many of the promotions I took always got challenged. So, one of the things we wanted to make sure of is that we're using a process that's been well-vet, well-vetted, has been challenged and has stood up in all tenants, and as you can see, under defensibility, this company's products have been tested and withstood scrutiny all the way up to the US Supreme Court as these processes have been challenged. Everything they do is heavy in diversity, as it says, "The best public safety department will reflect the diversity of its community." A large part of that diversity is reflective of the individual's cultural, racial, and gender identities. So, iOS believes in developing tools that promote racial, promote cultural, racial, and gender diversity is one of the most important facets of our job. That's why we've changed pretty much our hiring processes and almost hire now exclusively out of the public school system. What better way to have an organization that represents your community than to hire specifically out of your community and bring those young men and women into our organization? And that leads us to the Next Generation Firefighter Exam. This is the firefighter exam that we use as we're screening applicants. As you can see, the NGFF was originally developed by CWA's Research as their premier entry-level firefighter examination offering. This exam combines a straightforward cognitive ability measure with multiple situational judgment measures, as well as mechanical aptitude measure. This exam focuses on utilizing tools and measures that have minimal impact on protected classes. And as you can see down at the bottom, it gives you a little bit of insight into their measurement domains in both cognitive, situational judgment, and mechanical aptitude. Once again, Mr. Chairman, this, this test replaces the legacy civil service exam that we used to give with the gears and the knobs and the levers and the roadmaps, and the more recently-used Wonderlic Exam and Ergometric Exam, which are not geared toward firefighters or public safety. Additionally, they did not take into consideration inclusiveness or diversity, and we have had, so far, using this as our entrance exam, have had tremendous luck in reaching those employees that previously were not successful in the exams that we used. Moving forward into what Appendix B does cover, the firefighter driver engineer examination, also known in our world as sergeants. This exam is designed to measure the candidate's knowledge of equipment use, pump and ladder operations, and general fire ground tactics. This exam is distinct from traditional job knowledge tests in that it is based primarily on situational scenarios rather than just testing memorization skills. The product results will save time and resources by finding candidates that are knowledgeable and are prepared for promotional opportunities. And one of the things that we also liked about this particular product is they do offer an online portion, which allows us to speed the process up with human resources and allows HR to interact directly with the exam provider for those results. It is a sixty-question exam, candidate's given two hours and thirty minutes to take the exam, and results are typically received in twenty-four to forty-eight hours of receiving the answer sheets. The final test that's covered under the renovation, or the modifications to Appendix B is the Lieutenant's Exam, also known as Company Officer One. And as you can see here, this promotional exam for Company Officer One, Two, and Chief Officer were developed specifically for fire agencies to determine the extent to which candidates possess the necessary job knowledge required for success as fire service supervisors. The exams were developed based on job analysis collected from fire departments across the nation. The job analysis results provided the empirical data for determining the relevant knowledge areas that are evaluated by Fire Company Essentials examinations. And you can kind of see the, the measurement domains that are common across all three exams but are tailored to the specific exam, and as you can see, all three exams are a hundred questions, you get two hours and thirty minutes plus fifteen for instruction, and specifically, Company Officer One is first-line supervisor position, specifically the rank of lieutenant, which is what we are discussing. And those measurement domains are EMS Operations, Tactical Operations, Building Construction, Tools, Equipment, Apparatus, Supervisory Principles, and Incident Management Procedures. So, what are the changes we're making? They are very few. The vast majority of the current promotional procedures have stayed, as did PD, but what we did do was change the return for competitive testing to specifically the rank of sergeant and lieutenant. I added a promotional process for the position of Chief of Staff, which was a new position that was created by the BOC but was not included in our procedures. The promotional exam for both sergeant and lieutenant will contest of a written, will consist of a written exam and an assessment center. The assessment center will consist of at least two job-related activities and some examples for sergeant, that would be a pumping exercise where, and all this is now conducted digitally and virtually, they'll be given a pumping exercise to show us their proficiency with actually pumping one of our apparatus through a simulated incident, and then an incident command scenario in which they are in charge of responding units to a fire ground. And then for the lieutenant, they will go through an advanced incident command scenario that typically gets more complex with fire victims and more building involved, and then they get thrown a role-play exercise, which is always our favorite when we get to simulate personnel issues. All the results and scoring are handled by Human Resources, the fire department is not involved in any of the testing process or scoring or revealing of the scores, only the final banding is provided to the fire chief, and that's once it has been done and certified by HR. The highly qualified list is valid for forty-eight months, qualified and not qualified are valid for twenty-four, and the reason for that is if for some reason you find yourself on the qualified or not qualified, then you're basically not banned from future promotions for four years, those lists will expire after two, and you would be available to retest. So, if you have a bad day and you wind up on not qualified, then in twenty-four months you can retest and hopefully get on that, that highly qualified list. So, it, it kind of speeds up the process of the retest for those that do not wind up in highly qualified. So, why sergeant and lieutenant? As you can see here, the rank of sergeant and lieutenant make up the bulk of our promotable ballots. We currently have eighty-nine sergeants' ballots, we have seventy-nine lieutenants' ballots, that makes up a total of eighty-seven percent of the ballots that require promotion to be placed in them. The remaining thirteen percent are made up of captain, battalion, deputy chief, and assistant chief, and now Chief of Staff. The ballots that are in the thirteen percent follow our current promotional procedures, which are based on best practices that are outlined in the Twenty First Century Fire and Emergency Services Study that was completed by our accrediting body. Specifically, it addresses Critical Issue B, Initiative Two, Item One, which in that is, Critical Issue B is under the heading of Culture. Initiative Two reads, "Promote an organizational environment that is adaptable, open to change, innovative, and focused on continuous improvement." And Item One states, "To select and promote leaders and managers in the organization who model the desired organizational behavior of self-assessment and continuous improvement." And I provided a copy of the promotional procedures for the board so you could see the redlined revisions that are made, but these changes to this document, which are proposed at this time, will bring us in line with Clayton County Police Department and make our processes very similar. The only thing that changes is who administers the test. Outside of that, the process is about how it's done, banding, assignment demands, promotions, everything else is identical. So, with that, sir, that's as fast as I can go through it, so I will entertain any questions.
And that last part that you just mentioned is done by HR, so.
The entire test is administered by HR. So, the organization is not involved in, we don't even see the test scores, the test scores transmit from the company to HR. The only thing I get at the end of the process is a list of banded candidates from highly qualified, qualified, or not qualified. qualified, qualified, or not qualified. Um, the only time I get involved is if the HR director finds that there was some level of disparate impact somewhere in the process. She and I sit down, have a conversation about what that is and what her remedy is. We agree to that, and then she moves forward. But the process is handled holistically by human resources.
Sounds pretty much like same process. For the most part, we used to have fifteen, twenty years.
It's exactly the same process, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the chief in reference to this presentation? Thank you, sir. Go to you next.
Yes, sir. Um, the next one are some proposed modifications to chapter forty-two, which is entitled Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services, and this is in the official code of Clayton County. Um, and going through our annual or bi-annual review of our, um, fees or our fire code, um, the Fire Marshal's Office has identified a couple areas that we needed to fix due to conflicts with some state law. And then they've, um, have made some changes to our permit fee structure to bring us kind of in line with community development and the International Building Code, um, in some areas and kind of how we, um, we administer our fee structure. So first up, our current ordinance that's in place under section forty-two dash sixty-one dot three, which is entitled Where Installed? This is dealing with automatic fire sprinkler systems. Um, as you can see, the one that's highlighted in red, um, paragraph C in that says, "All new one and two family dwellings built closer than fifteen feet from another structure or closer than ten feet to the property line must be equipped with an approved automatic sprinkler system or constructed of non-combustible exterior masonry materials and must have protected openings." Um, we put this in several years back, and it was as a result of cluster homes that were coming into the county built all out of vinyl siding. We were having issues with a structure fire that happens in the middle of the night. Before you can blink your eye, you have five houses that are on fire, um, simply because they're built right on top of each other and of combustible materials. So we added this code section in there to, um, do one of two things. Either drive the houses a little bit further apart, um, so we do not have that radiant heat that sets one to the next, to the next, to the next, um, or make them to where they're built out of a non-combustible material with protected openings, i.e. no windows on facing sides so fire can jump from one window to the next, um, which does happen. So as going through our review, as we always do, we discovered that, um, this provision by this Georgia code was made illegal. So in the two thousand eighteen Georgia code, um, the General Assembly passed, um, this that basically says, section eight dash two dash four, says neither the state residential and fire building code nor any residential and fire building code adopted by a political subdivision of the state, adopted after May twenty-fourth of two thousand and ten, shall include a requirement that fire sprinklers be installed in a single-family dwelling or residential dwell, building that contains no more than two dwellings. So essentially, we are prohibited from making our subdivisions safer. So, um, what this, um, request to change this ordinance does is basically, oops, it basically deletes what was paragraph C and makes paragraph D now paragraph C. So we basically just deleted that entire section from, um, from our code. One thing we did notice is that in the zoning ordinance, um, under the subdivision design standards, they do have some similar setback requirements that should help us accomplish the same task, um, assuming variances and stuff don't happen, um, to allow those to get closer. But the provision we had was ruled a no-no, so we pulled it out. So we are prohibited from asking people to sprinkle their homes. Um, if it gets to three or more, that's considered a commercial building in a multi-family dwelling, so the rules change and we go to an apartment, um, chapter in the code, and now we're right back to enforcing it. But as long as it's a one or two family dwelling, can't do it. Moving forward, um, there's a couple of internal policies that we have had for years, but they've never been codified in the code, so we're simply adding some new sections. The first one is entitled forty-two dash six, which covers NOx boxes. Um, basically, a lot of our buildings that we have in the county provide the fire department access to what's called either a NOx switch or a NOx box. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you remember, we, several years, many, many years ago, we started requiring apartment complexes to install the NOx switch on all apartment gates so public safety can access the gates no matter what time or day. We all have keys that are custom cut to the county, um, and they'll put that in, turn the key, the gate opens. And what that does is, as you know, apartment complexes change management like crazy. They change the gate codes. Nine-one-one can't keep up with it, so in the middle of the night, we can't get in. So this eliminates that. Um, what this article does, though, is allow us to, and a lot of businesses do this anyway, but this actually codifies it. But what this does is for large facilities, facilities that have special security measures, or whatever the case may be, this, um, requires them to put a NOx box on the outside of their business, which gives us keys to the facility should we need them in the middle of the night. What this does is prevent us from causing damage to the building. If we get on a large warehouse with an active fire alarm, we can't see from one end to the other, we go through the front door. And a lot of times, that means glass gets broke, doors get damaged, whatever the case means. This allows us to just open the door and go in. The, um, key owner is notified anytime we access one of these box, so the key holder can come. Uh, but it allows us to access certain types of facilities without causing damage to them to make sure there's no immediate life hazard or active fire. Um, some cases prior to this, we've had fires that have raged in the back of warehouses, and we just had no way of knowing it was burning. And it's hour and a half or two hours before a key holder can get to us, and you know the damage that can be done in that amount of time. So this just allows us to gain access to facilities, um, without having to make our own, um, access. The second, um, code section goes back to the vehicle access gates, which was the NOx switch that we talked about. So essentially, this once again takes an internal policy that we had had and codifies it into the code that basically says, if you're gonna put up an auto, uh, gate across a vehicle access gate, that that has to have some sort of automatic, um, operation or manually operated so we can get into it. Um, most of the time, we'll have people that put up gates across access roads, and we have no way to access through that gate. They're either padlocked, chained, um, or they have some other mechanical device that doesn't have the NOx switch. So what this says is that the installation of vehicle access gates across fire apparatus road shall be approved by the chief of the county fire and emergency services department. Where those vehicle access gates are installed, they shall have an approved means of emergency operation. Um, the vehicle access gates and the emergency operation shall be maintained operational at all times. And then it kind of tells you, um, what your four options are, um, as, as how you can carry that out. But that's just to make sure that either we or law enforcement are not impeded from accessing a building by a vehicle access gate. And this only applies to what's deemed a fire apparatus road. So you can have four or five entrances into your facility, and if they're not ones we deem necessary, then this would not apply. But for those ones that we mandate meet a certain standard for fire apparatus access, this would apply. Finally is the proposed changes to our fee structure. Um, what we did is we went back, as I said, and we made these, um, kind of comply or, or be concurrent with, with kind of what the IBC says. Um, and we also restructured it so they're consistent throughout. So, um, the only ones that are shown on the slide, um, are the ones that we are, we are changing. And then, of course, I provided a full copy of the fee structure for the board for your review. But essentially, under our certificate of occupancy inspections, we structured those to mirror our existing building inspections. Um, so this is how it's structured for our annual inspection, so we just mirrored that, um, so that those would be consistent. Um, moving down to under construction plan review, the previous fire sprinkler print, plan review, um, had it listed just zero to ten heads, or eleven to fifty, or fifty-one to a hundred. We standardized this to be per system riser. So for every system riser, um, you have, that fee applies, and that's kind of how it's laid out, um, in the International Building Code. And then down under, um, F, which is building construction inspection, um, we added a fifty percent completion, which is required on a lot of our multi-story facilities. That was not in our previous, um, inspections. And then because the hundred percent inspection is technically the certificate of occupancy inspection, we deleted that from section one, and then we changed bullet point two to first follow-up inspection, and then bullet point three is the second and subsequent follow-up inspections. Um, and then the final, um, one that's on there that's hidden down here is, um, under existing business and fire compliance inspection fees, um, item C was more than fifty thousand square feet, and we added multi-family occupancies, um, to that. And that's kind of our plan is to ramp up, um, the level of inspections we do on our apartment complexes, and that's going back to the quality of life initiatives and everything that we've been doing, um, in conjunction with PD, um, and working with, uh, Commissioner Franklin on some of our apartment complexes. So we've added, um, that multi-family occupancy inspection fee to the existing business fire com, fire, um, inspection fees. And then finally, we made one small change, um, to the EMS fee structure. The way it's written now is we have a basic life support transport fee, we have an advanced life support, advanced life support two, and then critical care, transportation, and then our per loaded mile. All of these fees, um, are in, um, alignment with Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, and of course are adjusted periodically to compensate for the rate of inflation and the provision of additional services. The only thing we're doing here is we're deleting line item two. Um, and we're taking out the two in advanced life support two. So essentially, we're just doing away with one fee and rolling it into one. So the new code structure, geez, um, will just be basic life support, fee stays the same, advanced life support, transportation, fee stays the same, critical care, and mileage per loaded mile. Essentially, the reason we're doing this is our third-party biller says that we rarely bill at the advanced life support level. Um, it's either basic life support, or it qualifies for advanced life support two. So there was no longer a need to have another line item, another charge, another bill. It was overcomplicating the billing, so we just deleted it altogether and simplified the structure. So it's either basic life support, advanced, or critical care. Um, it just simplifies it for our biller and simplifies it for our patients as well. And the requirements to hit each one of those are set by Centers for Medicare and Medicaid. So there's certain things we have to do. If we can't document that we do those, then we don't get to move up to that level. So that's all I have on the code ordinances and revisions.
Okay. I'm just actually surprised that some of those issues and challenges have not been, had not been addressed before now. Uh, I can see that being a big, um, hurdle or barrier in terms of y'all being able to access buildings.
Well, and, and, and like I said, Mr. Chairman, they've been internal policies. We've, we've been doing it, but one of the things that we noticed is within all of our codes, it says that a copy of that is on file in both my office and the clerk's office for review. But since it was not a part of the code, that policy didn't exist in the clerk's office. So, um, our fire marshal brought that to us and said, hey, let's just go ahead, drop this into code, so it hits MUNI code. So as builders and developers are coming in and they're doing those code assessments, it's all right there and laid out for them. So, um, but it's been a challenge for, for years, even with it, you know, as a policy, so.
Any questions from other commissioners?
Uh, yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, chief. Um, in your, um, I think the NOx box, code section forty-two six, does that apply to old apartment complexes, since that's what we have a lot of in Clayton County?
If they, if they have access control gates, yes, ma'am. Most of those, when we, when we implemented that policy, um, s, many years ago, um, we went back and did make that policy retroactive. So, um, if there's one out there that doesn't have it, um, then we will certainly go out there and look into that. But it does, um, on the access control gates, it does include those. And then, of course, anything new, um, is, it's a part of their construction process.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And it is their responsibility to maintain that. So as a part of their annual inspection, that's one of the first things that our inspector does is test that gate 'cause they have to get into the complex. So they test the gate, and if the gate does not work, then that's one of the very first things, um, I believe we have that listed as a critical failure item, 'cause that's, if we can't get in, we can't do our job. And it's the same thing for law enforcement.
You can get in. There'd just be some major damage.
Oh, we can get in. Don't, make no mistake about it. So our, our folk are, are, you know, they can get through a gate, but.
No doubt.
You're gonna get a phone call if we do.
That's all right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next up is economic development. I assume that Commissioner Franklin is leading.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I'd ask for a couple of our lead developers to come and speak before us. I don't know if people remember, but, um, a few, about a couple of years ago, we had Eugene come speak to us about the housing market and how we are faring against that housing market in Clayton County. And we've not had an update in a while. And it was brought to my attention that Eugene actually has been promoted and works in a different, for someone different and not, no longer in that capacity. So, um, the builder of the year, Chris Knight, who is actually from Clayton County, his family was raised in Clayton County and, um, continues to operate in Clayton as well as throughout the state of Georgia, brought up some very valid and, um, poignant points that I thought would be pertinent to share with us, um, to be in that space, um, so that we can get that housing update. And so if I could just ask for IT to please queue them up. They would hear from both Chris Knight of, um, previously Knight Builders. Now they're under a different name. The family has grown bigger. Uh-huh. But, uh, also, we're gonna hear from Brad with Rock Haven Homes. I don't know if you all remember that builder. A builder previously only built north of I-20, and they have, um, done a, a, what I've seen as a good job. And then, um, the residents have even said it's been a good job after we get in to really negotiate the terms of that build. And so they're just gonna share some of their great experiences and what they feel that we can build on in Clayton County, as we continue to expand our housing market in a quality fashion so that we can finally bring in those various restaurants and, um, businesses. So with that, I'll throw it to the IT department to get them queued
Um, Commissioner Franklin, I don't see Chris Knight on here. There isn't, um, Atlanta Zoom room, and I put in a chat for him to raise his hand. Okay, there he is.
There he is.
I see Brad Hughes there. Brad is just muted. I see Brad.
I think Chris is on now.
Hey, this is Chris.
How you doing, Chris?
Chris, if you could tell us a little bit about yourself, first of all, 'cause I know too often we hear about developers not being from here, and there are those like yourself who make us proud. So tell us a little bit about yourself before you tell us about, um, some of your prized, um, I guess, work here. And I want to state this too. This is not germane to any district. Um, as, as I stated, Chris Knight is a number one builder in the state of Georgia, so he builds throughout all of Clayton County. So with that, Chris, I want to, um, turn it over to you.
Okay. Hey, thank you so much for your kind words, and thank y'all for your time. Um, my name is Chris Knight, formerly Knight Homes. Uh, we're currently joined with Dan Ryan Builders out of Maryland, uh, one of the top twenty-five builders in the nation. Uh, my dad and uncle started the company in nineteen seventy-eight, had the opportunity to retire last year. And so, um, joining with Dan Ryan was, was one of the ways that we could, uh, help them retire after forty-two years. So that was, that was pretty cool. Um, yeah, I've been building in, in Clayton County since seventy-eight. I grew up in Clayton, uh, went to Point South Elementary, uh, Church Street Elementary, and then Riverdale Middle, and then Lovejoy High School. I still live just over the Hampton Line on the Henry County side, and, uh, drive through Clayton every single day. So it was cool earlier to watch some of the presentation about the Parks and Rec. And, um, I, on my way to work in Fayetteville here, we, uh, drive past that Rivers Edge, uh, Greenway area every day. I remember playing golf there, um, you know, fifteen years ago or so before it closed. So a lot of memories. I had the opportunity to meet, uh, um, spend some time with, uh, Ms. Franklin there at the, that Flint River Community Center. I'm not sure the proper name, but, uh, at the Open House. Um, that was, that was fantastic. So congratulations on just, uh, some high-quality things going on in the community. Uh, very impressive. Um, currently, we're building in three neighborhoods in Clayton County. Um, the lakes at Mondays Mill, Mondays Mill Road, uh, Village Park in Ellenwood, and Town Center in Lovejoy, in the city of Lovejoy. Um, at three different price points, um, different lot sizes, in the, anywhere from the, about two hundred and thirty thousand up to about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, I, I pulled some data. Our Mondays Mill project and our Village Park project looks like had the highest average sales price of, uh, new home communities in the county, so that was pretty cool. Um, and so we've been building here for a long time, enjoyed working in Clayton. One thing I wanted to do is compliment the building department. Uh, we work in about twenty different jurisdictions, and, uh, the permitting process is, is very different everywhere. Um, and in Clayton, we can get a per building permit today in a week or two, which is still very, very quick and reasonable. Uh, the only county we work in that's faster than that is Winnet, and every other jurisdiction we work in is much slower than that. So thank you to the building department for, um, for that. Time is money in our, in our industry. Um, and so that, we, we thank you for that. Uh, I did reach out to a couple of data sources, uh, to get some information. I thought you might be. I did reach out to a couple of data sources to get some information I thought you might be interested in real quick. One is Market Insight, John Hunt, who does presentations similar to what Mr. James used to do. And I asked John about the market in Clayton. I said, hey, John, what would you like to highlight? He said, well, what he would highlight is current demand. In Clayton County, we would need an additional thirty-four hundred homes available for sale today in order to get back to equilibrium. And so what John's telling us is there's a deficit in Clayton County of about thirty-four hundred homes today to get back to equilibrium. And to contrast that, there were only five-hundred-and-fifty buildable home sites or lots sold in Clayton County in the last twelve months. And this is not a whole lot different than what we're seeing in other jurisdictions, where the number of homes being sold is more than the number of homes being produced, and the number of homes being produced is much higher than the number of lots or home sites that are being brought to the market. So that's a, the good news is, demand is great. The bad news is, supply is so low, and there is such a shortage that prices are skyrocketing, pricing many people out of the market. In addition to that, we've seen record-high lumber increases, among other cost increases. And so the, the, the current baseline for a detached, single-family home is very quickly approaching the three-hundred-thousand-dollar mark, above three-hundred thousand. And townhomes are very quickly approaching the mid-two-hundreds, that two-forty, two-fifty mark, just based on current cost and increased land, increased development cost, and increased housing cost. One of the things that is, that I thought might be worthy of highlighting quickly is the timeline. We have, we're starting with a shortage, and we project to take a brand-new piece of property from zoning. If we have to get new zoning on a piece of property, all the way until a house is ready to sell on that property, it takes anywhere from twenty-seven to thirty-three months. So it's over two years, and hopefully less than three years. And so if we bring a project before you today for zoning, we've already put six to nine months of planning and, and engineering into that project. And then we come before the board, and then we're looking at it being almost another two years after that zoning before a house would be, would be ready for sale. So the process is very, very long. It's very, very expensive. And so one of the things, you know, a few things that developers talk about that, that would help affordability. One is lot sizes and home sizes. Because as costs continue to increase, it, it does help to have flexibility in those areas. And then secondly is just the development timelines themselves. Getting tabled is, is very, very difficult. We have a project today, we will bring before you guys in another month or two called Genesis Towns. Ms. Battle's representing us. Steve Moore, Moore Bass is our engineer. So we have not even brought into a zoning hearing yet, and we've already spent over ninety thousand dollars on this project in testing, engineering, planning, environmental tests, all, all types of things. And so before we even get to the hearing, you know, it's not uncommon for a developer to spend fifty to a hundred-plus thousand dollars, not even knowing if the project is going to be approved or denied. And so the communication, we're always available, and I think all builders and developers are, always available for communication, always available for questions. As much as we can learn and respond to prior to those meetings which determine our fate, we, we would gladly appreciate the feedback, gladly appreciate having a seat at the table, and feel like we can always arrive at a, at a solution that is a win-win for the county and also for the company that's, that's making the proposal. Those, those are really the highlights that I had. One other thing, I did pull some data from Smart Numbers. I thought this was interesting. Last year, there were almost nine hundred new homes and new home closings in Clayton County. In, in the year two thousand, twenty-one years ago, there were over two thousand new home closings in Clayton County. So as busy as it seems and as robust as the market seems today, we are way below where things were even twenty years ago with regards to housing production and, and lot production, production in the metro Atlanta area, which is driving the, the cost up even, even further. So we need lots, the, the development community needs lots, the home-buying public. There's, there's definitely demand for, for housing in Clayton County and all the, the southern crescent counties. And really, that lot supply and the ability to get, collaborate, then get deals approved, then bring lots to market faster is gonna be key as we, as we move forward.
Okay, before we move to Brad, just have one question for you, sir. And that is, what incentives, if any, are you seeing in the market to address the supply issue that you mentioned just a little earlier?
What incentives?
Yeah, are there any incentives out there that you know of or that you have seen in the market to address the, the shortage?
Yeah, a good question. I don't, I don't know of any. I know that there are federal opportunity zones and things to, to supply tax incentives, which, which are interesting. I don't, I don't know enough about that. Other than that, I don't know of any local incentives. In most places we work, the timelines have gotten much longer and the costs have gotten much greater. You know, the specifications, not, not, not really on the houses, but on the development infrastructure and on the things like street widths, things that, that, that we could collaborate on ways to save not only our costs today that we could pass on to buyers, but also future maintenance costs for municipalities. But as far as just, just incentives off, off the shelf, I don't, I don't know of any.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's hear from Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, thank y'all for your time. This is Brad Hughes of Rock Haven Homes. And I appreciate y'all having Chris Knight tonight to speak before y'all. Chris made several great points earlier. And Clayton County is, is a, is a great place to build in and continue in our, in our minds, you know, in the foreseeable future, a hotbed for the housing market. It's close in to the airport and City of Atlanta and everywhere around there, the interstate systems, all the, you know, job growth in Clayton County and around, you know, Clayton, that you can be, you know, fifteen to, you know, twenty to thirty minutes, you know, multiple different industries. You know, it's a huge benefit. We hadn't been in Clayton County near as long as Chris and his family, but we started looking at buying deals in Clayton County probably four years ago. And, you know, started off probably seventy lots, you know, now we're up around two thousand lots that we have either own or have control of in Clayton County. So we, you know, we think it's a, it's a great, you know, community and county to be in. And a lot of that, you know, is leadership of y'all and, you know, at the county level, too, during the permitting process. Like Chris said earlier, y'all's permitting process is, is, is great. The ability to have the plans submitted and turned around.
I think we lost them a little bit.
You know, in a week, you know, months at times, you know, getting permits. You know, the more added, the...
Mr. Hughes, your connection is fading in and out.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think that he's actually hit all the highs. You know, Chris being that he's from Clayton County, so he's just came and was just an amazing show-off tonight. So I think he hit all the high points as well. But first of all, I want to say congratulations to both Chris as well as to Brad. Both of their companies have been extremely cognizant of our county and the, the means in which our county is wishing to grow. Both of those folks have come to the table to ask, what can we do to move forward? Again, the reason I ask for this update again tonight is because we've had an update several years ago. And I feel it's extremely important that as we continue to have aspirations to grow economically, that we address the very components of that growth, which is housing. The housing market, the ever-changing housing market, and availability of housing. And then also addressing the fact that in Clayton County, we've got to come into balance between our renters and our homeowners. So I know that some time ago, we approved a code that would allow for more homeowner, homeownership. And I can tell you that these two that are here online with us are definitely for it. They're seeing folks come in. And what prompted this specifically is Chris said, you know what, Felicia? It may take two years for us to get to the point that the house is ready to sell. He said, but I have no issues with selling it. And as he shared with you, our housing market is doing very well in Clayton County. There's definitely potential for even more growth. And we need to continue to expand and expound upon that. Also, Mr. Chairman, I remember you stated a question to Chris earlier. I don't know that, that, and it was a great question, but more so than opportunities, what we have to do is have a better understanding of what it takes for us to grow economically and the housing market itself that's ever-changing. And with that being stated, that opportunity is simple of allowing for more, not just new homeowners, but those who are retiring. And if I may just end this presentation with this, there's a jewel that I believe that Clayton County would benefit from really marketing even more, and that is our seniors, and that's our senior citizens. You know, years ago, Florida was a place to go and retire. Well, people are getting tired of dealing with the hurricanes and, and the unpredictable weather, which we do deal with some here. But what we're noticing, and I know Chris and even Brad probably attest to it, that our population may be getting older by age and indigent, but these seventy-year-olds like Mama Ansley and all those folks, they'll dance the night away and put you to shame, all of y'all to shame. So my point of saying that is, Clayton County has the only nationally accredited senior services. So we need to look at marketing our homes to folks who have that expendable income, who can come in and take out, let's say, a hundred thousand dollar retirement and come in and buy a piece of property. Because that is your biggest investment in life. So I really hope that we can take this information and build upon it. And I just thank the two gentlemen for coming. I thank them for coming to the Communities on the Rise event and coming every year. And I look forward to us building together, because the time to come before our board is not just when we're approving zoning, but it's all, it all begins with relationships at the beginning of the day and the end of it.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for Brad or Chris before we let, let them go? All right, gentlemen, thank you for your presentation and the information.
Y'all so much. Thank y'all. Sorry about my connection. I apologize.
No problem, no problem.
No problem at all, Brad. Thank you for your time. And thank you, Chris, for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all.
Keep making us proud, y'all.
Next discussion point is Alzheimer's Service Center. Ms. Tori Tanks.
Good evening. One of the things that I, I'm really big on is the why. I've had several people ask me, Tori, why are you so passionate about seniors? Why are you so passionate about your job? Why are you so passionate about what you do? And sometimes I think it's important to understand the why. So I'm not gonna take long. I have a couple of, I have quite a bit of slides, but they're really quick. But I do want to take a second just to talk to you about my why and why I stand before you to do this presentation. When I was at Hampton University, all I wanted to do was work in a senior center. I did an internship at North Hampton Senior Center in Hampton, Virginia, and that's all I wanted to do. I wanted to work in a senior center, and I wanted to give back. The main reason I wanted to do that is because my grandmother, who raised me while my mom was in college, developed early onset Alzheimer's. And then my great-grandmother, who also lived in a house with us, she developed dementia. And at the same time, my grandfather ended up with lung cancer. My family made a decision that they were not gonna put my grandparents into a nursing home. This was a decision that, it was very hard. My grandmother getting Alzheimer's, she was the rock of our family. It shook our family to the core. But my mom and her siblings, they made a decision to pool together their resources, and we paid someone to come into our house and take care of our grand, my grandparents. This was a lot. My mom was in her final years of teaching. She had to miss a lot of work because she had to stay at home to take care of my grandmother, who was the climbing help. We ended up having to pay the person who lived in our home Monday through Friday from eight to five-thirty. We had to pay her salary plus her insurance and benefits. This was very hard on our family. So for me, working in a senior center was gonna be my way of giving back. Little did I know, being so young and naive, that senior center jobs have a low turnover rate. And my mom's like, you need to figure this out, because I can't continue to provide you money to live in Virginia. And so what ended up happening, I could find a job on the recreation side, working with youth teens and adults. So I transitioned over to Parks and Rec and absolutely loved working there. Came to Clayton County, worked diligently, helping get some of the rec centers open. Absolutely loved it. I also moved back to, when I moved back to Atlanta, the reason was to also help my parents, my mom, take care of my grandparents. What ended up happening, life has its way. Sometimes we make our plans, but life has a whole other plan. I was not looking to go to senior services. Clayton County made a decision that senior services was gonna be its own department. And just like a chess piece on a board, I went to senior services. Was I looking to go to senior services? No. Was I heartbroken because I had to leave Parks and Rec? You bet I was. But in that small, still voice, it said to me, this is something you prayed about when you were doing your internship. This was something that you asked for, and you said you wanted to advocate. You said you wanted to be there for seniors. You talked about your grandparents. I come from a small town, Ta-ta, Georgia. There was no daycare center. I was raised by older relatives. My Aunt Sarah, who passed away almost a hundred, she was my after-school program. All of my grandparents were alive up until I turned thirty. I had a step, two-step grandmothers, great-grandmothers, grandmas. Everybody in my family lived a long time, except for my grandmother, who developed early onset Alzheimer's, and she died very young. So my why has nothing to do with politics. It has nothing to do with anything other than advocating for a group of people who cannot advocate for themselves. So in the January twelfth work session, you guys, we were talking about one thing, and then my passion kind of jumped in and made me start talking about the Alzheimer's Service Center. That same passion that rose up on January twelfth is still there. I met with the Alzheimer's Service Center, as you directed, to find out exactly what would be needed to assist ASC with becoming financially stable, whether that meant bringing them up under senior services, whether that meant providing funding to them. In my research, it was a lot. This program has been suffering for a while. It's not something that just happened. It's just been a trickle-down effect, where they're at the point now where they're facing their doors being closed. And so as I met with Sylvia Dennis, who's the current manager of ASC, I had to unravel the pieces. I had to read the audit. I had to kind of look at some things, because, you know, I, I don't really deal in gossip. I like to go to the facts and find out what's going on. I've heard several things about ASC not being physically responsible, which is why they're in the shape that they're in, so many different things. So I took it upon myself to do some thorough research and put together a presentation for you guys. So I'm gonna talk about ASC's purpose, the statement of need, their advisory board, the program overview, fees and charges, proposed staffing, the proposed budget, outstanding facility needs and options. This is not gonna take very long. I know it's late, and we all want to get to our families. So Jamie, so the purpose, the Alzheimer's Serv, Service Center provides adult-day services, overnight rescue services, caregiver support services, and total health services for seniors suffering from Alzheimer's, other dementias, and their caregivers. At present, the Alzheimer's Service Center, as is well-known as ASC, is in financial peril, and, and will have to close its doors permanently. In 2015, ASC's funding was reduced by In 2015, ASC's funding was reduced by a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And this is the misnomer. We've had several conversations, people saying that ARC pulled the funding. So I spoke with ARC directly, just so I can provide you some factual information. What happened in 2015, ARC changed their model. So as you know, ARC, they provide funding to us from state, federal and state. Um, old Americans add funds and state funds to us to provide services, in-home services for seniors and in our senior centers. Well, at the time, the director in 2015 decided that they no longer wanted to fund brick and mortar buildings. They would fund the services, but not brick and mortar, mortar buildings. This a hundred and eighty-four thousand represented some of that. So they changed their model. So what needed to happen was ASC needed to apply for the service model and that didn't happen. Um, didn't happen for reasons that I really don't know, but ARC changed the model and that's why they lost the funding. Um, since then, the center has not been able to recoup the loss of this funding. So each year, they're constantly scaling back, trying to just figure out how they can make it work. Right now, the advisory board, um, they have an advisory board. One of the things in my, um, in my presentation you're gonna see is I'm gonna talk about proposed changes and I'm gonna kind of talk about where they are. And part of this is, this whole presentation is if ASC were, were to come up under senior services. So when I say proposed changes, these are changes that I'm recommending for financial sust- for financial sustainability of the program. So at present, there is an advisory board. In my recommendation, I would leave the advisory board intact. At present, the chairman is state representative Mike Glanton. The vice chair is attorney Sam Foster and there are two members. I would make some proposed changes to this. Um, I would add a secretary and a treasurer. I think everyone understands why you would need a secretary and a treasurer on the board. And I think the offices should have term limits. You need fresh, new people in there sometimes just to make good decisions. At present, this is not a board-appointed board. That would be at the board's pleasure if you decided to make this, um, a board that you guys appoint, like other organizations that you assign board numbers to. So the program overview. Adult day, um, ASC provides adult day services, overnight respite and telehealth services. The facility opens from seven-thirty a.m. to four-thirty p.m. Monday through Friday. There is weekend respite, which is Friday at four-thirty p.m. to Sunday six o'clock p.m. A lot of people say, why do you need weekend respite? Anyone that knows, if you're dealing with someone that has Alzheimer's or dementia, you need respite. Um, my mom was not able to take vacations. She couldn't come to Virginia to visit me while I was there because she was tied to my grandparents. Had she had a program like this, she could have put my grandparents, my grandmother, um, my great-grandmother there and she could have easily come to Virginia. So this is weekend respite. At present, ASC is not providing weekend respite. It has not provided weekend respite in a long time due to staffing, staffing issues. Um, ASC provides meals, structured social, recreational therapeutic group activities, medical monitoring, counseling, long-term, long-term care planning in an interactive, safe and secure environment. The care provider may allow these individuals to delay nursing home placement. That is a fact. Anytime that you have someone who has Alzheimer's or dementia and you put them in a safe care and nurturing environment, it does prolong or delay them going into full-blown out Alzheimer's or other, um, related dementias. It is, it enables family caregivers to remain in the workforce. Had my mom had the luxury of having this, it would have saved our family tons of money. Um, some of my family members had to go into the retirement fund to be able to take care of my grandparents. Telehealth services are now offered. These are services at the beginning of the pandemic. Some of the services being offered are planned activities, therapeutic activities and, um, meals are being provided. But as you know, that's difficult for someone with Alzheimer's to do, um, telehealth and log into a computer. So their caregiver really has to help them participate in telehealth services. So I have a proposed change here. Um, I really think that the hours should be more like seven o'clock to six o'clock p.m. Not that I'm comparing a senior to daycare, but daycares are, are in place for working parents. This center needs to be in place for working caregivers. So if you open a center from seven o'clock to six o'clock p.m., then that means I can take my loved one to ASC and drop them off. And by the time I get off from work, I can pick them up. So there are two models. There's a medical model and a social model. At present, ASC is operating on a medical model. Um, the medical model, it provides more intensive services such as onsite nursing care and medicating, medication management. Um, full personal care, showers, continuous care and eating. So you gotta think about someone with Alzheimer's and dementia. These are things that they have, uh, uh, issues doing. They can't take medication for themselves. They have to be reminded to take their medicine. Um, sometimes they have continence issues. Sometimes you have to prompt them to eat. You have to help them if they have an accident to take a shower. So right now, ASC is operating on the medical model. The medical model is a tad bit more expensive because you need to have a registered nurse and you need to have a licensed practical, practical nurse onsite. Um, if ASC became, came under senior services, we could look into a social model or we can do a combo because there are some social models out there where you could have just a R N to administer medicine or L P N to administer medicine. But that definitely will be something that we will take a look at if, a little later, if the board decided that ASC should come under senior services. So there are two levels. So you have two different participant levels. A level one is a participant that is very independent and requires minimal supervision. When my grandmother first, um, developed Alzheimer's, she was pretty functional. Um, she can do things for herself. She can eat. She can do what she needed to do. But as the disease progressed, not so much. So then she went into a level two state. So a level two participant requires help with daily living activities such as eating activities and using the bathroom or continence. The program overview. The program capacity is fifty. So you think that's a really small number. However, you could serve more than fifty people because not everyone is gonna come or need service Monday through Friday. Some participants comes Monday and Tuesday. Some come Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Some may only come once a week or some may just come for weekend respite. So you could actually serve more than fifty, but the capacity of the building is fifty and you can only accommodate five people for weekend respite. At present, there are twenty-eight participants enrolled at ASC. Nineteen are Clayton County residents and nine, and nine are non-county residents. I'm proposing to do something like an eighty-twenty. Um, it doesn't matter where you live. If you need a service, you need a service. But I do know the board has mentioned time and time again about, is ASC accommodating county residents or non-county residents? And so I'm proposing that we do something like an eighty-twenty or a ninety-ten. But if we do an eighty-twenty, fifty-five of the participants, um, I mean forty-four participants would be Clayton County residents and eleven would be non-county residents. Fees and charges. So you have three different things going on at ASC. You have private-paid participants. These are people who they do not qualify for Medicaid or Medicare. They're paying directly out of their pocket. And then you have a program called CCSP, which is Community Care Service Program, and it's a reimbursement program. ASC is, ASC is doing fairly well with that because when they have a participant that qualifies for Medicaid, that money is then reimbursed back to ASC. And then there's also SORCE. And that's the same thing. It's a reimbursement program. It's just that some of the nuances and the financial requirements are a little bit different. But those funds are reimbursed directly back to ASC, ASC. Weekend respite fees are five hundred dollars per weekend. These are fees that also could be reimbursed as well through CCSP and SORCE. And then also, if a senior makes a healthy amount of income, the five hundred dollars would not be a problem. This is ASC's current sliding fee scale. So as you can see, if I make ten thousand dollars, I pay forty dollars a day. Sounds good, but this is really difficult. Um, this has caused some of the financial difficulties that ASC is facing because, um, forty dollars a day, that is a lot. If I need to come every day, that's two hundred dollars a week. The average senior cannot afford that. Um, and it's based upon the senior's income, not the caregiver or the family income. And it then goes on and on up to, you know, just increases by improvements and blah. So I am proposing to move away from a sliding fee scale in this instance. Typically, that's not something that you would do, but move away from a sliding fee scale and implementing like private-paid monthly resident fees or private-paid monthly non-resident fees. This is something that we definitely will have to massage as we go. Um, I can't really give you hard numbers right now, but this is definitely something that would mitigate, mitigate some of the financial issues that happen. Because honestly, what has also happened to ASC, um, when you're talking about someone with Alzheimer's and dementia, it tugs at the heartstrings. So sometimes seniors have been allowed to participate with a promise to pay later. Um, and that has not happened. If this program came up under senior, senior services, I do believe in accountability and I do believe in holding people accountable for what they owe and what they should pay. And I know it sounds really hard, but at the same time, this is a business that we would have to run to make sure that people who are participating in the program are actually paying those fees. The current staffing, because they have little to way to nothing. There's just an executive director. Ms. Sylvia Dennis, she's here. She's the current executive director. Um, she's wonderful to work with. She took the time to sit down with me and answer all my questions about operations. And as you know, our assistant director, Melissa Breyer, Melissa Marius Bristol, she used to be the executive director of ASC. So with the welcome knowledge from both of them, um, I was able to gather all the information that I needed. So they currently have a dietary manager that's on staff and two program aides. I'm proposing to move away from the dietary manager because there are some resources that we have in senior services and that's something that we could probably contract out. The meal program, like how we contract them out and other services that we provide. And this is an organizational chart that I put together and proposing. Um, we will have a center manager. Let me back up just a second. As not to create a parity issue with the staff that we already have, we did have to make some staff changes. Whereas Sylvia Dennis's title now is executive director, it would become a center manager. And so as not to create parity issues with the staff that we already have, we went with some of the titles that we already have in senior services. So there will be a center manager with the admin secretary for support because with a program of this nature and a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of reimbursement. There's a lot of different nuances to, um, reconciling and doing paperwork at the facility. Um, one program coordinator, a registered nurse, which is a requirement, a, a L P N, which is also a requirement, a case manager. The case manager is important because our seniors need to know, um, if we have seniors that call the facility, they may not know about CCSP and SORCE and how to apply for the doctor program. The case manager will help them navigate through those services, um, so they can apply for the doctor program. Our ASC site coordinators, what we're proposing, and that's someone that will coordinate the meal service that I talked about. Meaning that we would contract meals in. We wouldn't actually be prepping meals onsite. They would be contracted in and they would meet the dietary restrictions and guidelines for adult day health. We're proposing to have program aides, level-two program aides. The level-two speaks back to the slide before where I explained to you what level-two care is. A level-two program aide is equivalent to that of a CNA worker. Um, overnight L P N respite and overnight, two overnight L P N respite workers, that's two licensed practitioners, uh, practical nurses to work in a weekend respite program. And so all of this staff is what would be needed to put ASC back in a proper functioning state. So now I just wanna talk to you about the budget. Um, the projected income for ASC, as you can see where it says Georgia Department of Community Health, that's the CCSP and SORCE program that I spoke to you about. They receive roughly a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year from that. Um, the Georgia Department of Early Care, that's a reimbursement program for, um, meal, for snacks and food for the right from the start. Participant fees. This is pretty good. I mean, you have, they're bringing in ninety thousand dollars in participant fees and that's based off the sliding fee scale that I mentioned to you earlier. And then everything else is just additional grants, fundraising opportunities. Under senior services, there could be more opportunities. There could be resource sharing with grants that we already receive. Um, and like the fundraising golf tournament, there would be ways that we could actually support ASC to have a bigger tournament to raise more money. So the total income for ASC is three hundred and three thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Projected operational expenses. So this is everything that I spoke to you about, the part-time and the full-time salaries. It comes up to all four hundred and twenty-six thousand, part-time to a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And then there are, of course, there are all of the supportive line items to run the facility. These are comparable to our senior centers and how they operate. And actually, the total amount is pretty much equivalent to the cost, the cost of operating a senior center. And that continues. And so when you look at it, the total operational expenses at ASC is six hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and one dollars. And the total income is three hundred and three thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, which puts ASC in the red, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. This has been going on for years and years and years, which is where we are, why we are where we are now, that the center cannot, um, operate. Now, of course, there is some other stuff going on. Because ASC has not been able to fully operate, there is deferred maintenance. There are several things in the facility that needs to be fixed. Grounds and landscaping, when you ride back there now, it just doesn't look good. Doesn't look good for the county. It just does not, doesn't look good. The fencing needs to be replaced. Outdoor furniture needs to be replaced. The front awning needs to be repaired or replaced. Front doors need to be repaired. The alarm system is outdated. The fire system needs servicing. The H V A C system needs servicing. Kitchen appliances need to be replaced. The entire building needs painting and cleaning. Outdoor furniture needs to be replaced and windows need to be repaired. I did not have enough time to get quotes to come up, to dial them out for all of this. So we have options. Option one is we can do nothing. We can just do nothing and which will lead to the center closing and seniors and caregivers being displaced. Option two, the county could provide ASC with ongoing, ongoing funding and then amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. This option does not lead to sustainability because it's based upon the board and a vote every year and you just never know how that's gonna go. Option three is agree to bring ASC under senior services, providing three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, which has strong potential to, to decrease due to resource sharing. One of the things I can say is when I became the director of senior services, I cut our budget myself by almost a half million dollars. And that was just something that, being fiscally responsible as a director, it was something that I knew that we needed to do. Um, I'm not making any promises. If you decided to put ASC under senior services, that I could get ASC to a break-even point. But I can promise you this, the red would not be three hundred and eighty-three thousand. But initially, that is what would be needed to support the program for a year until our staff can really figure out what's going on and how to unravel it. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay.
They might have any questions?
Yes, plenty of questions.
Plenty.
All right, first question that I have is, I would like to see, it's not a question, it's a statement here, the outstanding or the needs for the improvement of the center. Those quotes or estimates in terms of getting it up to running. Uh, second question is, is there any money owed by the center to anybody?
As of right now, no. The property, there's no mortgage on the building. The land, the property is all there from the audit that I have looked at. I did send a request from State Representative Glannon. It was to post some information about the land and how that would have to be turned over to the county. Um, I have not received that information as of yet, but as of right now, there's nothing that's owed. All the bills are paid. Um, it's just a deferred maintenance and...
Are you familiar with any other counties that have taken on Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's Center within their senior services department or under their general budget?
Um, no. This is not something that, um, is normal because other cities, other counties don't have an Alzheimer's Service Center. This is a jewel. This is something that's new, is something that our county should be proud of. Um, a lot of other counties are interested in possibly using ASC. You spoke about me doing some research on a model, a regional model. I can't even begin to look at a regional model until the foundation of the center is established. So it's kind of like we gotta go back to square one and kind of do some rebranding and kind of get things established. And then that's a possibility because that would require us sitting down at the table with a Fayette Henry and talking about how we could pull together resources to make this a regional center. Um, the center has, um, enough room to increase the footprint of the building at some point because the capacity is fifty. So it doesn't make sense to go into a regional model when you can only really have a max capacity of fifty. Um, but that would be at the board's pleasure to determine about that.
All right, my last question's for the CEO, Ms. Staff. Could any of the money from the American Rescue Plan be leveraged to, as a bailout? Would it qualify?
Yes, sir. It would.
It would qualify?
It would qualify.
And that money would sustain, it'd be sustainable for what, three years?
Three years. Um, the infusion, our thirty million dollars will certainly probably hit us in the next thirty to forty-five days. And then we should get another infusion of about thirty-three million sometime next year, so. Uh, but money has to be allocated by that three-year period. Um, and so, yeah, we'll have about a three-year window in which we'll have to have money infused to allocate for whatever projects. But, um, the starters, uh, presentation, it would qualify based upon, um, health needs within the community.
And if the board did choose to, uh, take this on, then three years would give us time to try to find some alternative, uh, funding sources to try to sustain it. If this is something we wanted to do, so, thank you. I appreciate your answer. Are there any other questions for Ms. Tank? Are there any other questions for Ms. Tynes?
Mr. Chairman, this is Hambrick.
Commissioner Hambrick.
I have a couple of questions and some other thought questions too. But Ms. Strata, has this been a state agency before prior to or how have they been funded?
Okay, so I can only provide the information as far as I know. It has been a combination. It hasn't been a solely state-funded. A S C has received services from, funding from the county. They have received federal and state dollars from A R C at one point. And then they also receive grant funding from other sources. So it has been a combination. But it does follow under the state guidelines of an adult day center.
Okay. This information you've given us, has our CFO reviewed any of this?
I have not reviewed it directly with Ramona, but I did send it to finance to pull the numbers for the salary amount to make sure that those numbers were correct, but I have not provided directly to Ms. Dennis at all.
Okay. And I know you say that they are close to closing the doors and all this. I just don't see us making that kind of decision as far as taking on a whole other agency that in that short time length. And I know the C O O just said something about three years, da-da-da, but we're talking about years and years of service and all. Now, I have family members and all and I, I mean, I feel you and the things that you've said and what you've experienced and all of that. But I just think this is a decision that the board really, really needs to take serious consideration. I mean, we need an audit. We need, I mean, you're gonna have to have, I was just jotting some things down, you're gonna have medical staff. And it's gonna open us up, I think, for a lot of lawsuits and all too. I mean, I'm just trying to name some of these things that I've written down here. The medical services, the staffing, auditing, reviewing the records, opening up for lawsuits. And as far as, I think I said something about the state agency already. I just think this is something that needs a lot of questions and answers and research and review and professional advice and all before we take on something like this. Now, I can see where we were in the past assisting financially. I don't have a problem with that, but as far as taking it on as either another agency or putting it on under our senior services and all. And I'm listening too and trying to see how it differs from our aging organization that we have right now. How does this differ? I mean, I know you said the overnight thing and all. This is just so many questions here. I just can't start to, 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 to try and answer or get you to answer right now. And it's not a quick fix. Let me just say that. But for now though, if you don't mind telling me the difference between our aging operation and this, the A S C.
So our aging program is services for seniors who are homebound. These are seniors who are non-ambulatory and they cannot leave their homes. So we provide services to them. We come in and we provide meals on wheels. We do personal care. And that's where a C N A worker goes into the home and provides personal care, bathing, feeding, combing up the hair. And then we also provide homemaker services. The C N A worker comes into the home, cooks a meal, dusts the furniture, vacuums the floor and does all of that. That is for those seniors who cannot leave their home. This particular program is for seniors who have dementia and Alzheimer's. They're still functioning, still functioning. They can take care of themselves in some instances. They may be a level-two. They may need a little bit more care. But they can leave their homes and they still can enjoy life. They still can get out and do what they need to do. They just need some assistance.
Again, you know, thank you for your presentation and all that, but I just think this needs a lot of research, questions answered, auditing and just a lot of things. I don't want us to bite off too much that we can chew. And right now, I just don't see us being able to chew this. And maybe somebody can come in and tell me something differently, but I just don't see it right now.
Any other questions?
I do. First of all, let me say thank you for just your dedication. Just, it shows, your passion shows and how you work and just the words you use and how you move through all these different decisions. So just thank you for what you do. And I love that H B C U background because it just shows in your presentation and your org charts. Don't get upset, Chairman. But I agree with Hambrick in one point that we do have to do our due diligence in making sure that we can accommodate this correctly. But I do know this, the way you eat an elephant is one bite at a time. We owe it to our seniors to begin to assist them in any way that we financially, reasonably financially can. And so we're for that. I've spoken to Ms. Dennis several times throughout the past on some of the issues that they are having. And I'm all for trying to figure out how to better service this area of need. One of the, something that I wanted you to touch on a little bit more was through the sharing of resources with the senior center, how much, I'm not saying a dollar amount, but from a percentage standpoint, that you can begin to offset some of their costs through the sharing of resources.
Well, one way we can do that is I did reach out to A R C and so I did ask for guidance before I did this presentation. I reached out to A R C and I spoke to other people who have adult day centers just to talk about some things. A R C has explained to me that our current, the current funding that they provide to us, A S C is eligible to receive a lot of that funding. With us coming upon the notice of available funding from A R C in the next two-year period, we could ask for money from the Old Americans Act grant to support A S C. The issue is A S C has not been able to apply for that funding because this funding is for the triple-A, is for Clayton County. So we would be able to ask for funding under the O A A, Older Americans Act Administration Fund to support A S C. We actually have funding in this budget year to support A S C. A R C granted us permission to use some of our funding, but COVID happened. And so the members were not going to A S C. We could not use that O A A funding to provide service to supplement at A S C. The acronyms are getting me mixed up.
Okay. Also, and you kind of went into some, but are there any other subsidies that you know about or even Ms. Dennis knows about that we can begin to use to offset some of these costs? If you were brought in under the county or some sort of subsidiary model thereof?
Well, there is tons of funding out there, especially when you're talking about Alzheimer's and dementia. There's funding out there that you can apply for. There's HUD funding. It's eligible for all of that. So it's just a matter of us just taking a look at it. Now that we're a member of the National Council on Aging through our accreditation, they have grants that you can apply for. As a matter of fact, A S C would be a prime model on a national level for them to do some research. There are research opportunities with the National Council on Aging to apply for funding and do some research there. So there are plethora of resources that we can look into to support A S C.
Great.
As opposed to depending on the county for the full three hundred and fifty.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. And also too, Ms. Dennis, we would be remiss if we did not say we were doing, sponsoring the golf tournament June twenty-eighth to begin to raise money for the Alzheimer's Center. So I don't know that website to go on. If Ms. Dennis could give it to us, before we get out of here, I appreciate that.
Well, we'll make sure it's on our website, definitely, if it's not already there. Any other questions?
Well, I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to make a suggestion.
Yes, please.
Ms. Strata was just saying all these funding sources are out there. What's prohibiting A S C from applying for, you know, these different funding, go through these different funding sources and remain their own entity with the assistance, including again, county, state, federal and these grants and other funding sources that are out there?
Well, the state that A S C is in right now, there are only three staff there. It has dwindled down to just three people. So you're talking about the three people doing the research and trying to find grants. Just by default of being under a county department would lend A S C to a lot of resources that the county is eligible for as opposed to A S C just being its own separate entity. Not to say that the option that you put out there could not work. For me, it's not about it coming under senior services or not coming under senior services. For me, it's about us not letting that program just dwindle away. So whatever capacity the board decides that we need to support A S C, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Can I ask this question to you, Chairman? Would there be any way for us to begin to provide some sort of grant writer or some type of grant writing functions and research functions to A S C to begin to research this?
Number one, we don't even have a grant writer. Our department does that research themselves. But nothing keeps the A S C board from finding somebody and asking them to do the same. Maybe they'll do a pro bono or as a charitable five-on-one C organization to donate their services for that purpose. So I would employ them to at least look at that, to your point about seeking out some additional funds. And that might be something they've already done or tried at some point in time as well. So I won't speak for her, but yes, that would be a good recommendation. Questions? Okay, so if you would just provide those, some additional information. As Commissioner Hambrick has said, it's a lot to digest and a lot to have to vet on a short period of time. But if you could tell us about what it would take to bring a lot of those repairs up at the center. I want to see those as well as any other funding sources, grants, grant opportunities that if it fell on the county side, what department or what grants will be available, if you know. And I think, I think I was, I thought you had said something else. What was it?
It was just about the grants or the...
Okay, well, we covered that. And that would be a start. Do we have a date that they might have to shutter the doors?
I was told at the end of this month.
End of this month, which is a week?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. I don't know if that's a realistic timeline, but we'll take that under advisement. All right. Is there anything else? Thank you for your presentation and as Commissioner Hambrick has said, your passion for the seniors and all that you do for us here in the county. So thank you so much. All right. If there's no other business before the board, we will stand adjourned.